Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Education for Monday, October 10th, 2022. Please join me in standing in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all. All right, for roll call this evening, we, Stacy Ruel and Amy Crosby are both absent out of town this evening, so we have a little business to take care of before we move forward. What I would like to do is make a motion that in the absence of Vice Chair Clerk Crosby, I'd like to appoint Enrique Velasquez to assume the duties of Clerk Pro Tem. May I have a second? Do I need that, Martha?
Second.
Okay. Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries four zero. Thank you. I also make a motion, in the absence of Treasurer Ruel, I would like to appoint Director Mary France to assume the duties of Treasurer Pro Tem. Could I have a second?
So made.
And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That carries four zero as well this evening. Thank you very much. Next up, we have our open forum. And inputs from staff, students, parents, and community members in major decisions can be a valuable form of assistance to the Board. Open forum is an opportunity to address the Board. Individuals who wish to address the Board during business meetings can do so on a topic not on the agenda. Speakers will not be allowed to verbally attack, disparage, or potentially defame individual Board members, employees, or students, nor may speakers use vulgar or profane language. Also, speakers may be precluded from disclosing personally identifiable private data regarding employees or students. Speakers unwilling to conform to the rules or time constraints may be told their privilege of speaking has ended. Board members shall listen respectfully to issues brought to them by the community but not engage the individuals during their time. The Board shall not deliberate or take action during open forum regarding an issue presented. And I also want to note that if there is a request for follow-up on our forums, there is a place to list your name and where to be contacted. So we have this evening Naomi Dahl, who will be coming up to speak on cellphone safety. And Naomi, I will give this back to you if you want to follow-up from somebody, and then if you just leave it, pass that down. Just make sure maybe drop it with Martha who's over there when you're done.
Okay.
So we know where to contact you. You have three minutes this evening. And Jonathan Drews will let you know when you have 15 seconds left. He'll hold up a yellow card and then stop at red.
Okay.
That's a mouthful, isn't it?
Yeah, that's okay.
Thank you so much for being here tonight. We appreciate it.
Yes, good evening, School Board. My name is Naomi Dahl, and I'm a part of the leadership team at Cellphone Safety. We are on a mission to keep our students safe from the dangerous aspects of using cellphones, toxic social media, and the internet. There is, our student anxiety and depression rates are at an all-time high with a direct correlation to cyberbullying and unsafe cellphone use. Specifically with our special needs students, at even higher risks. We have been and we are having meetings with citizens and parents in this district who are concerned with their students, their children's, online safety. So I just wanted to honor the School Board and let you know that you will be receiving emails from these concerned parents and citizens with their students' safety. This is not a cyber attack or spam. I just wanted to honor you and let you know that these parents will be exercising their voices. And that I might ask today is that you hear them and prioritize them. Specifically, what Cellphone Safety does is we give students in a classroom environment where to go and the right tools to be able to handle unsafe and unethical situations while they're online. We meet all the Minnesota State Media Literacy Standards, and we work with multiple schools in the Minneapolis area. And we have helped improve students' schoolwork by 82% as well as improve overall sleep improvement. So thank you for your time today, and I just want to honor you with letting know that those parents and citizens will be exercising their voices. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next this evening, we have the approval of our agenda. Do I have a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
So made.
By Enrique. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Mary. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries five zero this evening. Thank you. Next is our consent agenda. Consent agenda items are considered to be routine in nature and will be acted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a Board member so requests, in which event the item will be removed as a consent agenda item and addressed. On this evening's consent agenda, we have, under financials, the check wire transfer dispersment summary, the wire transfer EFT and ACH banking activity, the bank reconciliation statement for June and July and August of 2022, the PMI investment statement, the monthly wire detail, monthly health and dental wire detail, the monthly check detail, and the monthly ACH detail. We also have the approval of the School Board minutes for the regular board meeting of September 12th, 2022, and the study session of September 26th, 2022. Under personnel, candidates for employment is listed in your packet, resignations, terminations, and non-renuals as listed in your packet, and leaves of absence as listed as well. And then finally, we have the district curriculum advisory membership for 2022-23. Could I have a motion to approve our consent agenda this evening?
So made.
By Enrique. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Mary. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That carries five zero. Thank you very much. Next up, we have our resolution for acceptance of gifts. This will be a roll call vote this evening. In your packet, you have a listing of recent donations to our district, and I would just like to call out briefly the names of people who have been supporting us. Karen Lucy, Health Source Chiropractic, Melba Hensel, Westwood PTC, Stacey Ocharo, and Jim Grover. We thank you for your generosity to the district. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution accepting these gifts this evening?
So made.
By Julie. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Jonathan. This is a roll call vote. Jonathan?
Aye.
Enrique?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Aye. That carries five zero this evening. Thank you very much. All right. Next up, we have Laker Pride, Special Recognition, and Lakers Showcase, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Thomas.
Thank you, Chair Nelson, Board of Directors. We're going to reverse the order. We're going to start off with our recruitment video due to some family schedules so we can honor them tonight. But as you know, we are challenged in getting some of our positions filled, and like every other district around us, we're all fighting for the same small pool of candidates that are out there. And so we are trying to be innovative and creative in terms of how we promote the district. And tonight, we have Ms. Musman, who will talk a little bit about the video engagement that we've put together and to premiere our new recruitment video for the community. With that, I'll turn it over to you, Ms. Musman.
Thank you. Good evening, Board members. I'd like to invite some students that you probably recognize up to the podium. I think I saw Neilia, Aaliyah, Ethan, Devon, Mitchell's back there. Who else? It's a packed house tonight, so if I didn't call your name and you were in the recruitment video, come on up here for sure. You can stand right here by me. Guys are looking good. You look very familiar. There's Mitchell. Okay, got everybody? Well, these students did a fantastic job helping us with our video. I think it was fun, too. Some of them have experience, and they've been doing videos for a while, some have not. But it was just a really fun day at Hamilton Ridge. The purpose of the video was to have a fun way to show what a day in the life is like here in Pride Lake Savagery Schools for our workers, and how fun it is to work with our great students. To date, we've had just over 3,100 views, and I've even heard that applications have come in, and we've hired somebody based on the video. So it's, good job. So I'm going to just ask each one of you guys, you know, what it was like to be a part of this video and what you liked about being an actor for a day. And you can come right up here and let the Board know what you thought. Who wants to start? How about you, Devon? Kristi, do you want the mobile microphone so we can see them? Sure. In case they can't reach over the podium. You guys want to come up?
Yeah.
You guys want to come up a little closer? Yeah. All right, so this is Devon Chen, and Devon, what did you like about the video?
I liked how it was like really funny, and I, I think I did a great job. The teacher.
Yes. I like your tie, too, by the way. All right, Ethan, do you want to come up next? Let us know what you, what you thought. What did you think about being an actor for a day? What was your role?
I was the custodian, or the maintenance guy.
And what was your favorite prop?
The tortue belt.
The bagels.
All right, Aaliyah, do you want to come up? And did you like being an actress for the day? And if so, what did you like about it?
I liked to be, like, having, I liked it because it was fun, and I got to be in the teacher's lounge for once.
Really fun to see behind the scenes in a school, so that's, that's, that was fun. I agree. All right, thank you. Neilia, do you want to come up? What did you like about being an actress? You were kid's company, right?
I liked that the teachers were the kids and the kids were the teachers.
That was fun. Yep. Good job, Mitchell. And what did you like about being an actor?
Being a teacher and bossing everybody around.
Fun. All right, should we play the video for everybody? All right, let's do it. I think we should. We'll play it. Oh, that's okay. This is funny.
Oh, there we go. That's good. That's good.
I'm Ethan, and I'm a Laker. As you can see, I work in maintenance. I love the business, so this is the perfect job. Oh, and I work here part-time, which gives me plenty of time to work on my other passions.
Oh, yeah? Like, like what?
I recently just picked up dancing. Not a drag, but like I'm really good.
Don't lie, it's good.
Hi, I'm Kurt, and I'm a Laker. Golden rams or chow?
Golden rams. Thank you.
Apple plump.
Apples, for sure. Perfect.
Salad or carrots?
Do I have to eat a vegetable?
Yes, you do.
Okay, I guess I'll have a little bit of salad.
You need more.
Oh, okay.
You need more.
More? Oh, now this is what I need over here. Okay, okay. Thanks, Mitchell.
I need a little more.
A kid just peeped in the hallway?
I'll send somebody.
These drawings are going so well right now.
Thanks.
Hi, I'm Neilia, and I'm a Laker.
Hi.
I love spending time with students before and after school. It's so rewarding to make a positive impact on their lives. They teach me something new every day.
This is Neilia. Have you liked my drawing?
Oh, I love it. It's a lovely picture of your family.
It's a unicorn tree, and I did see one, I just don't know.
Oh, it's really pretty.
Thank you.
What is that?
Hi, I'm Devon, and I'm a Laker. I was going to tell the little kid that I wanted to be a teacher. Now that I'm in my 40s, can you cut that out? Now that I'm in my 30s, I'm going to be happy to teach. I love my students. They're awesome. Can you cut out my age completely?
Can I be mentioned at all?
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks. Can I get back to work?
Yes. Thank you very much.
What'd you do this weekend?
I drove all the way to my kid's baseball practice.
I worked on moving my house.
Sounds very fun.
Hi, I'm Mitchell, and I'm a Laker.
Seven times five.
My favorite thing about being a parent professional is working with kids.
What's your second thing?
Working with such a great team. We have so much fun together.
Our students can never find out what we do during our lunch breaks. Ever.
Pride Lake Savage School, we don't take ourselves too serious.
But we do take meeting the needs of our staff and students seriously.
Each row has a big impact on our students. Trust us. We know.
If you're interested in being a Laker, visit our website. That's where you can learn about our competitive pay, benefits, and job openings.
Can we go to the park? I want to go to the park. Are we done yet?
Yeah, I want to go take my lunch break.
If you're interested in becoming a Laker, visit our website to learn about our competitive pay, benefits, and job openings.
We have certificates, too.
Yes, they did a great job, and I just want to, do you have the list of all of the names? I know not all of the students are here today, but...
The ones that are here today, we'll, we'll give them their certificates, and then we'll recognize all of them and then get them to them.
Sounds great.
So we have Mitchell. See, Mitchell Perez. Come on up and grab it, and then just wait over here, and we'll do the group photo, okay? Grab that. See, Aaliyah. There you go. Neilia. You're welcome. Ethan. And then Devon. And then we also have Lenny Bartleman, Bukhari Amin, Amin, and then Rosalind Buchwalner, who is also going to be recognized for their participation in the video. So can we give our students a... There you go. Perfect.
I think some parents want to take a couple pictures.
Parents, if you want to quickly snap a few. All right. Congratulations, you all. Okay, we have a few more that we're going to recognize. We're going to start off to talk a little bit, so this year, we, we started the school year for our sixth grade and ninth grade in a very different fashion. We started them both as cohorts, so they had a full day as sixth graders and a full day at ninth grade for critical transitions, for moving from elementary to middle and middle to high school. And we know that when you are making those types of transitions, it's really important that you build a cohort of support, and that's what our staff are committed to doing. And we've gotten lots of positive feedback from our parents as well as students, and we have done some soft survey data about this as well. Overwhelmingly, we're, we're hearing that this is a great opportunity for our kids to come back a little earlier. So we're going to hear about our sixth grade transition day at the middle school, and so we should have Haley Fagan, Lucas Hiley, Jake Carson, Lily Horton, Arabella Fritzson, Lydia Chelsea, if you all would come up. And Melissa, you're also going to come up as administration, perhaps? All right, yeah, come on forward. And they're going to share a little bit about the sixth grade transition day and the web experience.
So I'm Arabella Fritzson, and then this is Lydia Chesley, and we're in eighth grade this year, and we were web leaders on the sixth grade transition, ah, transition day. And so what a web leader is, so web stands for where everyone belongs, and what we did as web leaders was we wanted to make sure that the sixth graders felt welcome to the building and that, try and make the transition as easy as possible for them. So we volunteered our time to help them figure out how to get around the building and where their classes were and things like that. So, Lenny, I'll tell you more.
So, we started off by doing some fun games, like a rally thing, and then we went off into groups. And in those groups, we played lots of games that also, that were not only fun, but helped the sixth graders learn the ground rules of the school and help them transition into middle school smoothly.
And I think this was really helpful to the sixth graders because we didn't, me and Lydia, we were COVID years, so we didn't get to do it. So I think it was really helpful for them. And then, one more thing was it helps the sixth graders build connections with each other before school starts.
My name is Lily Horton, and I'm in sixth grade, and I go to Hidden Oaks Middle School. And the first day of school, which was just the sixth graders, it definitely impacted me because I had no idea how middle school was going to work, how I was going to be switching classes, who I was going to be in classes with, and what environment I would have been learning in. And the first day kind of helped me with all of those things. I met a lot of the people in my class. I got to meet my teachers. I got to kind of connect with them a little bit more, and I got to see the, in the learning environment I would be in for the rest of the year, so.
My name is Haley Fagan, and I'm in sixth grade. I thought the sixth grade day was very helpful, and not having the seventh and eighth graders there made it a lot easier and less stressful to navigate around the school to all the classes that you needed to go to.
My name is Jake Carson. What I appreciate about, what I appreciated about the sixth grade transition day was the chance to walk through my schedule, meet some new people, and get a feel what middle school was going to be like.
Thank you for inviting us to present tonight. I think our students say everything for us about the impact of that day, so thanks again for having us here tonight.
That sounds good, and I've got some certificates. Jake? And a big thank you to our web leaders. I know that's a, it's a great opportunity for our students to demonstrate leadership. You've been, you've been there a few years, and you're able to help our sixth graders transition and really start to make those connections, so thank you both for being web leaders. Similarly, at the high school level, we had our freshmen start with just freshmen in the building, and if you all can recall back to your high school days, making that leap to high school is a really important transition, maybe your first toe in the water to adultish-hood. And that's an opportunity for our ninth graders to come in, and really, at the, at the middle school, same thing as the middle school, learn a little bit about the school and the programs and find their classes, et cetera. And I'd like to call up our link crew members, which are similar to our web crew at the middle school. Assad Abdii, Ishan Davla, Addison Laville, Andy Mounseemlouf, and they're going to talk a little bit about the high school transition. And I know Dr. Bezek is back there as the principal, so I'll turn it over to the students.
All right, so personally, my freshman year was during COVID, so I didn't get, really get a freshman orientation experience, and I was like clueless going into school. So I feel, I joined link crew to help better guide the incoming freshmen and have a smoother transition from middle school to high school and to like, without the upperclassmen in the building, they could like find their classes, meet their new teachers, and make new friends, and just overall spread, spread a positive impact for their first day of school.
Hi, I'm Addison Levy, and I thought this day was really important because I think it's really important to make relationships with the freshmen and really get them used to our school and our community so that they feel more comfortable joining into our activities and getting involved in the student body.
Hi, I'm Ishan, and much like Ryan, my freshman year I was online, so I didn't, we had like a Google Meet link crew orientation, but it didn't really work out too well, and I wasn't able to understand what was really going to happen. So my sophomore year, when I first came, it was a bit tough. I didn't really know what was going to happen, so, yeah, I just kind of wanted to help out the incoming freshmen, too. And like a lot of the classes, and they had, they were asking a lot of good questions, and I thought that was good to teach them about how are they going to get to their classes and stuff.
Hi, my name is Andy Mounseemlouf. Just like Ryan and Ishan, I had the same experience in my freshman year. I was mostly in quarantine all, all year, and so I never really got to know the school campus grounds, and it was really rough when I went into sophomore year because I had no clue, especially picture day. I was looking at the school, it's like, wow, this is like really big and daunting, but, but as time went on, I just learned, and I thought that it would, that it would be helpful to teach the freshmen how to also navigate their way around the school and know that it's not that scary in general.
Hi, my name is Assad, and much like everybody else, I think I had the same experience as well. I did not have a freshman orientation when I was a freshman, so I guess it was like a really good experience, kind of helping these freshmen kind of trend, have a smoother transition as they kind of, you know, came and explored the school. It was a phenomenal experience being a part of, you know, this whole link crew, you know, environment and everything else. It was really nice, you know, just being there and being a role model for the new freshmen and just being an example, and just kind of navigating the school and just being a part of it was just awesome, yeah.
Well, I have certificates for each, each of you, if you want to come forward. Oh, Dr. Bezek, did you want to share a few words? Sorry.
I just want to really thank the students for stepping up. We have about 85 or so link leaders, and they broke off into small groups and talked with kids and asked question, answered questions that they might have to about the high school experience. And if you've stopped by there, I mean, it's 3,000 people on a, on a daily basis, so having that day where kids can find their schedule, go through the lunch line, find a place to sit, and it actually helps our staff get a little bit of a dry run, too. I think transportation helps and food service because we've got new employees, and just, it de-escalates things, and I think it's contributed to one of our best starts we've ever had. We've, a knock on wood here, but it's been a, a great start. I want to thank freshmen, too, because they came in and, you know, you do some games and some corny things, and they bought in and had a good time, and it built community, and I think we're reaping the benefits of that right now, so I just want to thank everybody for buying in.
Absolutely. Well, if you all want to step forward here, I have Assad. Move it to a group photo over there. Felt like the, like the young kids' parents. I told these guys that they were just as cute as the other. Chair Nelson, those are the Laker Pride moments for this evening.
Thank you, and although most of the students and parents have left, I want to thank everybody. It's, it's daunting enough to come and speak before the Board, but to do it as a student takes an extra level of courage, but it's... and talked with kids and asked ques- answered questions that they might have too about the high school experience. And to, y- y- if you've stopped by there, I mean, it's three thousand people on a, on a daily basis. So having that day where kids can find their schedule, go through the lunch line, find a place to sit, and it actually helps our staff get a little bit of a dry run too. I think transportation helps and food service because we've got new employees and just, it de-escalates things. And I think it's contributed to one of our best starts we've ever had. Uh, we've, uh, a knock on wood here, but it's been a, a great start. And I want to thank freshmen too because they came in and, you know, you do some games and some corny things and they bought in and had a good time and, uh, it built community. And I, I think we're reaping the benefits of that right now. So I just want to thank everybody for, uh, buying in.
Absolutely. Well, if you all want to step forward here, I have Assad. Move it to a group all over there. Um.
Felt like the al- like the young kid's parents. I told these guys that they were just as cute as the other.
Chair Nelson, those are the Laker pride moments for this evening.
Thank you. And although most of the students and parents have left, um, I want to thank everybody. It's, it's, it's daunting enough to come and speak before the board, but to do it as a student takes an extra level of courage. But it's so helpful to us to hear what's happening in those buildings. And I am hoping to get some autographs from some of those actors a little bit later. Uh, next we have our personnel items. I will turn it back to Dr. Thomas.
Thank you, Chair Nelson and Board of Directors. Um, tonight we'll have our interim Executive Director of Personnel Services, Ms. Herman, um, share some of the staffing updates.
Thank you, um, Dr. Thomas, members of the board. We're bringing forth an additional staffing request for our educational support staff. Um, the three separate ones, there's a campus supervisor need for an additional 1.5 hours per day to provide additional oversight on the building for activities, a noon supervisor at Hamilton Ridge due to additional, um, student numbers and building, uh, building needs, and then adding back the kids co-site leader position at Edgewood School to help with the additional staffing, enrollment, projected growth and improvement of the overall program that we're bringing forward for a recommendation of approval tonight.
Okay, comments or questions for Emily this evening? Mary? Oh, I thought you were raising your hand. I apologize.
I was looking at you, but I do have a question. Um, so are we using, uh, uh, existing staff and increasing their hours, uh, for the campus supervisor and noon supervisor? These are not really new positions. This is an increase in their contractual hours, correct? Or budgeted hours?
Yeah, great question. For the campus supervisor, yes, it is an, an extension of, of a position. For the noon supervisor, it's a, it's a new position, um, because the noon supervisors that are currently there, we need another body during those hours. So it is an, another noon supervisor position at, um, 2.25 hours for that building.
Okay, and the CES Kids Company Site Leader, um, you had mentioned that we're adding that back in. Um, was that pre-budgeted from before and then we never filled it? Or how did that come about being lost and then coming back in?
Um, it's my understanding that, uh, two budgets ago, it was removed due to enrollment at that site. And now the enrollment has come back to the point that a site leader is needed. And then, um, also projected growth in that wraparound programming for, uh, early childhood is going to need additional support.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments or questions?
I have a question. Are the costs, fully loaded costs with fringe and benefits, or is it just straight salary for each one of these positions?
Great question. It is, um, fully loaded cost. It includes the fringe benefits as well.
Okay. And then, uh, yeah, thank you for, uh, working with Director Fredrickson on evaluating the budget implications. I'm curious, in the go-forward budget projections, if this information is also going to be incorporated into any sort of projections or how that works?
Yeah, moving forward, we will include these positions in, in our budget planning.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Covered mine.
Or yours? Okay. And as I recall in, uh, information in our packet, the, um, the CES Kids Company Site Leader is part of Community Ed, um, budget, so. That's correct. Thank you very much. Okay, at this time, I would take a motion to approve the additional staffing request, uh, for educational support staff for 2022, 23.
So made.
By Mary. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Jonathan. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? All right, that carries five zero. Thank you very much. Now on to unfinished business, or I'm sorry, we have no unfinished business, new business. And I'll turn it back to, uh, Dr. Thomas.
Thank you, Chair Nelson, Board of Directors. Um, tonight, uh, our Executive Director for Business Services, Ms. Frederickson, will walk us through our October one count, um, and then talk about any, uh, changes based upon forecast to actuals. I want that. Turn it to you, Ms. Frederickson.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas, Chair Nelson, members of the board. Um, the enrollment numbers that you have before you today look, um, exactly the same as they did two weeks ago that we presented. Um, we're not seeing major changes. Uh, again, this is October first. We have a little bit of time to report our official October first numbers. Um, we're hoping that the, any loss has been sort of mitigated and that we won't see any more declining enrollment as we go through the year. Um, and then obviously we do have some opportunities to try to gain some students back as we move forward. Um, and just, uh, an FYI, we will give you a monthly district enrollment report that we'll just include with the financial statements every month. Um, so we can, it'll show last year where we are at each, at the beginning of each month and then the, um, cumulative loss during that year and then just compare it to what we currently are seeing in the current year. So I think that may be helpful just to kind of get a perspective of, of, um, how things are looking in the big picture.
Great, thank you. Um, comments or questions around enrollment right now? Jonathan?
I would just, if I understood that, you're saying that would wind up in the consent agenda each month? Um, I think that's fine. I, I wouldn't mind if, if we pull it out maybe quarterly and just have it as a, have it as a topic.
Sure, we can absolutely do that.
For some discussion.
Yeah, and I think, uh, it'll be part of the conversation as we build the budget.
Yeah, exactly.
Because obviously we're doing revenue projections that are based on enrollment. Um, and we will certainly have those conversations, but I just wanted to make sure that you would kind of get a, a monthly review of what they look like, um, moving forward compared to what it looked like last year.
Okay.
Mary?
Um, in previous years, we've estimated another, uh, smaller percentage, but a percentage loss as the year went on, even though we tend to gain a little bit sometimes in January, February and all that. Are we anticipating that and budgeting to, uh, a few more, uh, percentage points of student loss, uh, before the end of the year?
It's entirely possible that we could. Um, you typically, when you do your enrollment projections, you're looking at historical data. And obviously the last two years are not really historical, they're kind of anomalies. Um, so we'll kind of go back. Um, there's different ways you can look at enrollment projections. You can look at a three-year weighted, you could look at a five-year weighted, you could do a five-year straight average. Um, so there's different ways that we can look at it. Um, so I think typically we've looked at the last three years. So, um, as we move forward for the next couple of years anyway, I think we need to look beyond that. Um, so we'll look at that probably five-year historical data and kind of make some determinations on what we anticipate moving forward from there.
But as far as budgeting to spend, are we going to take the more conservative budget to anticipate potential additional student loss? Even if it's a small number, just to make sure we're safe?
That would be my preference. I tend to budget a little conservatively.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I would just echo what Ms. Frederickson just, uh, noted. I think it'd be prudent for us to be conservative in terms of our projections. Um, as I shared a couple of weeks ago, um, in working with, uh, the Scott County demographers, we're looking flat in the region. And, um, I just think in, in general, we want to plan for that, if not a slight decrease in just overall population in our region. Um, this is a conversation that superintendents are also engaged in, which ultimately affects staffing because we're also dealing with staffing losses. But then if budgets go down because of low enrollments, then that deals with some of the staffing. So we're, we're actually having that conversation this Friday at scale, um, with all the regional superintendents to talk a little bit about that. But yes, I would highly recommend that as a board, that we, you know, stay prudent, um, look at our, uh, for- forecasts. Um, we're having this conversation at our, uh, Finance Committee, or if I got that name right, the Finance Committee this week or last week, and just sharing, uh, with the committee, uh, about the, various business strategies that we could also be considering in terms of how we actively recruit, um, balance open enrollment, et cetera. So there's a variety of options that I think we need to look at, um, as a committee, um, and then ultimately be bringing that conversation to the board. And so, uh, Director Drew, to your point, I think our, our regular cadence for us to include this in our quarterly data report, um, that's, that's something I think we'll closely be monitoring.
Other comments or questions? I'll just add my gratitude too for putting it in the consent agenda, just so that it's always top of mind for us as we're working. Thank you very much. All right. Uh, next I'll turn it back to you again, Dr. Thomas, for personalized learning.
So we are getting into that weather season changing, which will, uh, warrant some inclement weather. And for that, we are going to be discussing, um, our e-learning days. And so, uh, we'll, we'll have, um, sorry, we'll have Dr. Edwards, uh, come forward and share a little bit about our e-learning protocols.
Yes, it, as we look outside, it's hard to believe that we have to put this on the agenda, but we do, uh, are obligated to, uh, share with our public, uh, that we would, uh, implement e-learning days. Uh, we have the opportunity to, if you recall from a year ago, uh, this was new, uh, and coming out of our experience with distance learning and the tools and experiences we had. Um, so included in your packet is what we refer to affectionately in a variety of contexts as a one-pager that summarizes what this, uh, looks like and what the experience for our students and families. So this, of course, will be on our website, uh, available. And as you can see in the opening of that particular, uh, one-pager, it speaks to specifically the first incident would be a closure, um, but subsequent incidents, we are a- able to implement and therefore not lose instructional time, uh, should an inclement weather day occur.
Thank you. Comments or questions for Dr. Edwards this evening? All right, so we're making sure we still get that official play in the snow day, is what we're doing. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much for that. All right. And Dr. Thomas, the election canvas date.
Yes, so in addition to inclement weather season, we are in voting season. And so, um, after the, uh, polls close, uh, we have a, um, canvas date that the board would need to select a date and time to canvas the election results. And just reminding the board and our community that that date needs to be between November sixteenth and November eighteenth of 2022.
All right, thank you. Um, next up we have policy and as directed by the board, um, the Executive Committee of the Board met with Dr. Thomas to begin reviewing the two hundreds. We have the two hundreds, one hundreds, and three hundreds, I think, to get through next for our policy review.
Yes, so we have to agree on a date between November sixteenth and November
Did we agree on that when you sent that email out?
No, you need to, you should.
Okay. Could you open your calendars and, and could we pick a time to, to do that? Thank you. We talked about that when we planned the agenda and
It is, I apologize, I should have called for the date.
All right, between November sixteenth and eighteenth, and it does not have to be, as I understand, our typical board meeting time, so it could be an early, uh, morning meeting as well. Um, does somebody want to propose a date or time? We'll just need to make sure we have, um, a quorum present to do that, to do it, so. Um, November sixteenth, I am out of town.
As long as we have quorum, um, and we've typically done it first thing in the morning, so it doesn't interrupt people's work schedules. Uh, as well as staff schedules. Um, I think we've met before at seven thirty in the morning and it takes about five minutes.
Is that doable for everybody?
Certainly, yeah. Morning of the seventeenth, anytime I the eighteenth works.
I'm in the eighteenth work. My preference would be the eighteenth. I don't know how your schedules are.
I'm good either day.
Mary, Julie?
I'm good both days.
So we could all agree on November eighteenth at seven thirty in the morning. Thank you, Martha, for the clarification. Do we need to vote and approve on that officially? Okay, so we have now set that canvassing date. Thank you. All right. Um, now we will move on to policy. And, um, we're trying to get through our two hundreds and then our one hundreds and three hundreds. Um, and we met to go through them and we're starting with some of the more low-hanging, uh, fruit of the policies. That shouldn't take as much, uh, discussion and editing. For the most part, you'll see there's minor wording changes or we have added in some wording as recommended by MSBA. Um, is it the direction of the board that I'll just name each one and what the policy is and ask if there's questions?
There is one other thing. Um, in our June board meeting, uh, we had said that before we started the next series of policies, we were also going to revisit policy five oh six because of legislative changes, statutory changes and issues that occurred over, and that was the, um, student discipline and bullying, our own school board bullying policy. We had stated that, so.
That we would review that before we did the
We would re-review it. We, right, we passed it again very quickly over the summer.
Okay.
And then we said we were going to revisit it before we went, before we went through this.
Okay, so we could put that on, can we put that on for the study session, the next study session? And can we still, because this is just an introduction of policies this evening, not an official first read, can we proceed legally and according to agenda? Is the board comfortable with that?
I am.
Okay. And Martha, I'll follow up with you about putting that on the agenda. Thank you very much. All right. So the first policy, thank you, Mary, for calling that out. The first policy, uh, two oh one is legal status of the board and I believe there were no adjustments that were needed to that. Are there any comments or questions? Again, these are just the introduction, not the first, official first reads. We're all good with that for now? Okay. Policy two oh two, school board officers and membership. Pull mine out here and I believe there were no recommended changes at this time. Are there any comments or questions about policy two oh two at this time? Mary?
The only other thing we said we'd revisit each year is the clerk being the treasurer or the vice chair and moving that back and forth because of the workload. Um, because if you wanted to, as chair, wanted to delegate more to the vice chair, then the clerk would move to the treasurer. We have moved that historically and at various times.
Oh, okay. So I thought we moved some of the roles around because of the workload.
We had it incorrect and moved it a couple of years ago.
Oh, that's what it was, yeah, because we did talk about that. Okay, then never mind. But I'm always happy to delegate additional responsibilities. Thank you for that, Mary. All right, um, so any other comments or questions on two oh two, officers and membership at this time?
Pretty straightforward.
Pretty straightforward is right. Okay. Two oh two point one, again, I don't think has any recommended changes. It is the student representative on the school board. Comments or questions on this one?
That one I had notes on too. Um, and I don't know if this stands, but, um, two years ago, we talked about, and I think it was right before COVID, um, actually rotating members of the city coun- of the student council that sat on the, on the board. And that was going to be discussed and then, of course, COVID hit, um, to give more students a chance to participate at the board. I'm not sure if that was something that got brought up. We said we were going to bring it up again when we talked about the policy and then ask if the, um, student council would like to consider that.
I, I definitely think that, um, most of our exec board members would be willing to come in and give a school report or a student, um, representative report each school board meeting. So that can definitely be something that we could talk about as a council too.
Chair Nelson, I mean, uh, Director Francis, want to be clear on what I, I'm hearing in terms of the response. Are you saying a student rep to actually sit on the board? That changes all throughout the year? Or somebody who actually does the report outs on behalf of the student council?
Well, what we had talked about was actually leaving that up to the student council to make that decision and have them come back to us before we approved this policy.
Gotcha.
So we wouldn't be deciding that for them. They would be deciding.
So they would make the decision whether they would keep one consistent member for the year versus rotate members throughout the year?
Correct.
Okay.
Um, do I, go ahead. I was just going to say, do I have direction from the board to pursue something like that and send it back to student council? Um, I'm certainly open to that. I do also enjoy though building relationship through the year as we work through issues as well and having a study. So maybe there's also a combination where we could have the report out, but the, the study sitting, you know, representative. I don't know how taxing it is for you though to be here, you know, once a month for a very exciting meeting.
Yes.
So could I get, uh, other direction from the board on how to proceed with this before we bring it back for a first meeting, a first reading?
Sure. Yeah, I would be perfectly comfortable with, um, members of student council reviewing that and whatever the outcomes are from that conversation, that that would be the direction that we would use to move forward.
Jonathan and Julie, thoughts?
I, I would, um, I like the fact that as you're speaking to the ability to build some relationship with the student who is here on a regular basis, um, I will also say I think we can defer to let the students have some voice in how they want to do it. If they, if they like the idea of a rotation, I think that's something we could consider. Um, personally, I, I think we do typically have somebody a couple of times throughout the year because typically our, our president, um, from the student council can't make it once in a while and somebody else fills in and we do get to see some other faces.
This policy does read that way as well, that there is an alternative person set up who fills in when the, uh, student representative is not available?
But I'm not opposed if, if the, if the student council likes the idea of some sort of rotation, I think that could be an option. Um, I do think in policy, I, I do, I kind of think in policy, it should be one way with an alternative because it's policy needs to maintain the flexibility for you to appoint somebody to come on your behalf. flexibility for you to appoint somebody to come on your behalf anytime. But I think it could get tricky in, to say, in policy, a rotation. I suppose that would work, but trying to think about how it works in policy.
Julie, any other?
Yeah, I'm finding if they want to talk about it and see if they'd rather have the option to rotate it through the exec board.
That can definitely be something that I can discuss with exec board, and we can decide what we want to do, so.
The question is, would the conversation be about who gets to come or who has to come?
Yeah.
I feel like a lot of, I don't know, I think a lot of people on exec board would want the opportunity to come to these meetings, but I think it's a great opportunity as well, so.
Let them know they're always welcome in the audience.
Yes, I will.
Dr. Thomas, did you want to add something?
Another question?
I was just going to offer, oh, I'll just offer on behalf of the board to request a meeting with the exec team for the student council and meet with them and then walk through the policy with them and then facilitate the conversation to see what their recommendation is. And then based upon that, you know, we can bring it back.
Thank you. I was going to ask, what are our next clear steps going forward? So thank you. Mary?
We, that also happened concurrent to us changing the district curriculum two or three years ago, the district curriculum committee. So we also had a student representative on the DCAK at that time, but then again, COVID hit. We did entertain that from the perspective of, of course, those Zoom meetings. And I wasn't sure if it's potential, when you bring it back to the student council, if the student that is also potentially a representative this year, if that adds to the decision or it needs to be discussed along with the different council member than their, their representation or different workloads on each individual.
So for, just for the sake of clarification, we currently have a student that sits on the advisory council, you're saying?
We started that.
For the curriculum?
We started that.
Okay. And is that currently a position, Dr. Edwards? Could you address this? I just want to be very clear what our next steps and direction are. Thank you.
Sorry about that. Yes, actually, I would love, if that could be a conversation, because I am in need of a student to join the district curriculum advisory. So that would be great.
Great, thank you. All right, thank you. Thank you, Mary. Appreciate that. All right. Any other questions on 202.1? All right, next up is 209, our code of ethics. We did add some wording under purpose, as is, I believe, standard in MSBA suggested policy. Comments or questions on this at this introduction of the policy? Okay.
I would, I guess if I could just make a comment, I just, going through it, it was just a, I feel like we ought to spend, each of us ought to pull this one out once a year just to remind ourselves about why we're here.
Right.
Right? And, and what we're doing. It's a, it's a good reminder of our function.
The 200s are our self-governing policies. And when we agree to policy for code of ethics, that's what we agree to hold ourselves to. So I, I agree. It's good that it comes up so that we can review it. Okay, next up would be 210, conflict of interest for school board members. And I do know there's, we have a few minor wording adjustments in here. If you look through strikeouts or change for a more appropriate word. Comments or questions on this policy at its introduction? Is good? Okay. Thank you. And then we are at 211, criminal or civil action against school districts, school board member, employee, or student. I don't think we actually had any recommended changes or word changes in this. Is there anything you want to bring forward at this point for discussion? Okay. And I believe this evening, our last, no, no, I have two more. 212, school board development and evaluation, referring to our continued learning, professional development, and participation in workshops and training. I don't think we had any suggested changes from the committee at this point. Any comments or questions on this one?
Michael?
Yes.
Not so much a comment on the policy, perhaps a suggestion for a practice. I don't know who would be the keeper of this, but I'll look at Martha. But going back to when I started, I think it would be extraordinarily helpful if somebody assembled a one pager or two or six or however many it would take to just give us a list of all the acronyms. I think I spent my first year trying to figure out what the heck we were talking about.
Please feel free to send your, your suggestions forward on the toughest acronyms, and that will certainly be a part of new board member orientation as well. Yeah, very good. Okay. And then finally, policy 214, out-of-state travel by school board members. This one did not have any suggested changes. Are there any comments or questions on this one? All right. So that is our introductory. They will come forward next as an official first read of policies. Get my agenda back out here. And then now, an official first read of policies. We are coming back to policy 535, service animal, animals in schools with Director of Student Support Services, Chuka. Thank you.
Hello. Good evening, school board. Really, I reread the policy after we spoke last week and looked at some other districts. And honestly, the wording is state and federal language, so I'm kind of uncomfortable changing too much of the wording. But one thing I did hear was how can we make it sound a little more welcoming and including? So I just changed the title to just from service animals to inclusion of service animals in the school setting, hoping that maybe sounded a little warmer and welcoming.
Sure.
But really, all the rest of the language is just really straight out of federal and state, state law.
Thank you for taking the time to investigate that. Any comments or questions right now? Mary?
I was, when the welcoming language, I was more or less referring to opportunities for other people to come in and help with the service animals. Like, could we add some language in there that basically states that the, the method, let's say, for a parent or guardian to come in, or a volunteer or something like that to come in and help with the service animal, particularly for those kids that are disabled?
So it does say that, that a handler can be anyone. So, you know, it doesn't have to be, if the student can't be the handler, it does say in there that anyone could be. It just isn't the school district's responsibility to provide that handler. So that, that I think is, is pretty clear in there. If you think it's not, I guess I, welcome to hear more. But it does state that anyone who can be a part of or can handle that animal could serve as the handler.
Right, I was, let me just, and I'm not trying to belabor the point at all. And I, I agree that it did say that it spent the majority of it per statute, per requirement, that the staff is not responsible, which I totally agree with. What I wouldn't want it to do is, is basically dissuade somebody who really needed that help. And if, you know, obviously, for somebody to come into the school, they also need a background check potentially or something like that. Is there, is there any way we could, you know, maybe put a link to if you want to volunteer, you want to do this, you, you know, if you're a parent or guardian, please go see such, give them a little bit more information. So somebody new to the school district, reading the policy, knowing their student needed that particular support, that it wasn't so hard to find that information or to make them assume who or what to call in order to get that information in order to be a handler.
Okay.
That's, that's what I was kind of referring to by welcoming.
Okay.
And I understand the requirements and that staff can't, and I totally agree with the way it's worded. It's just kind of, in, in, and I've, I've read it before, and I've read other policies, and I was part of the initial policy, like I said, of Southwest Metro. And, and that was one of the concerns there, too. So they did make some adjustments to it, and it seemed to work pretty well.
Okay, thank you. Other comments or questions along these lines? Enrique?
Yeah, so it sounds like, if I hear you well, Mary, it's somewhat of a blending of policy and what does the actual procedure look like for those that want to be a handler? So I was just taking a look at the form. It takes more of the perspective of the student or the individual that requires that specific service. But perhaps that would be a place where if you have a handler or you are a handler or you're the parent or guardian or whatever that case is, to fold that information into the form. So not so much in the policy.
The procedure form that I have with the policy, yeah. Yeah, that's a great suggestion.
There is name of handler.
That was my thought, too, is that I, I don't, I would be cautious of having people think they have to get all the information on the steps to take by going to school board policy as opposed to the day-to-day management, working with the building, you know, administrator or the appropriate staff for those services. And again, we do, we could address that in that form. I just, I would just not expect as a parent myself that I would go to the policy to figure out how to do it. And, and no disrespect, I just mean.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's accurate. Yep.
Yep. All right. So at this point, do we have direction for any recommended changes? Are we comfortable as is, knowing that there is the form to follow up with? I just want to make sure I have clear direction as we close up.
I'm comfortable with it on the form. I think that's where it belongs.
Okay. Comfortable? Mary, is that okay?
I'm okay with it. It's there. I'm.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks so much for spending extra time on that. I appreciate that.
Not a problem. Thank you.
There are no second reading of policies this evening and none to approve. We will move on at this time to administrative reports. So I'll start with Dr. Thomas for the superintendent report.
Thank you, Chair Nelson and Board of Directors. We are in the full swing of school. It feels good. The energy is back. And I am in our schools quite a bit, still committed to Mondays and Fridays to be in our campuses. And Director Burnick and I met on one of my campuses. And so some people questioned, are you really serious about that? I'm like, yeah, if you want to see me, we're going to meet at a school because that's where I'm going to be. And it's, it's a great opportunity for me to get a sense of what's happening in our classrooms, meet with our staff and our administration, and find where we can offer more support and find where we're also doing really well and celebrate our successes. And so I just want to thank our staff to a wonderful start of the year. It's just been absolutely amazing. And just to let the board know, this is, there's seasons for everything. This is goal-setting season as well. So all of the principals and my direct reports here, we're going through the process of setting our yearly goals starting off in the fall. And so really having some really deep, rich conversations with our building principals specifically around their school improvement plans and their actions and goals for the year so that we can progress monitor as we go along. So it gives me another opportunity to see where the priorities are. And I just invite you as board members, as you're going out to schools, to do, do ask building leadership about those school improvement plans. We want those to be front and center. That's their declared priority work. That's aligned to our board, your board governance, priority work for the district. And it gives you some look for us as you go through the campus as well. So I just invite you to do that. And that is the, oh, we have our last listening and learning tour that's coming up to the 11th. Is that tomorrow? That's tomorrow. Actually, no, we have two more. We did work with our faith-based community, so we're lucky to get one more added, I think, October 27th. And that will be at Shepherd of the Lake Church. And I just have to say a big thank you to our community. I'm seeing some of the faces out in our, our audience today. Many folks have been showing up for these listening and learning conversations, and they have been very productive conversations. I'll, I'll speak for myself. As a new superintendent coming in, and you've heard me say this all throughout the interviewing process, I'm very committed to our community and ensuring that community's voice is at the center of our, our conversations on behalf of our students as well. And I've been learning a lot. And once we finish these listening and learning tours, we will then compile some of the big themes that we have generated and heard. There will be several. We can't boil the ocean, but it'll definitely give us a blueprint for what we can work on going forward. And I've heard, you know, a share of concerns, but I've also heard a share of celebrations from our community about the great things that are also happening in our school. So very informative. So thank you, community, for coming out. And, and again, two more stops on that tour, and, and then we'll culminate that event and bring a report back to the board from there. So, and those are my, those are my updates for tonight.
Thank you. Any administrative updates this evening? All right.
We have one.
Oh, sorry, Emily, did I not look far enough forward?
That's okay. I just wanted to reiterate my gratitude for the students and staff that worked on the, the video in our communications department. It's been absolutely amazing to see some applications coming through stating that they saw the video and that was the reason they looked at our website. So I also want to plug, please share it. We know that recruitment from our community, our staff, our, our students are our biggest bang for our buck when it comes to recruiting and hiring high-quality staff. So just wanted to reiterate that and ask again for everyone to share it out with their networks, please.
Thank you. I have seen some shares on social media, and then people will jump in and say, you know, I sub every so often. It works really great for my schedule, or I do this. And so it is generating dialogue. Thank you for that. And I apologize. I will look more carefully next time. Thank you. All right. At this time, we have board reports. Ariana, do you want to start us out?
Yes, thank you. This past September, student council wrapped up our biggest week of the year, which was our homecoming week. We had a great turnout and heard lots of positive feedback from our student body and teachers and staff. Some events that we put on were the pancake breakfast, coronation, powder poof and powder puff, the royalty bus tour, pet fest, and of course, our homecoming dance, which was a complete success. We sold about 1,900 tickets overall, and our student council members put on, put in a lot of time and effort to all of these events, especially our dance. And it's just so fun to see everything come together in the end, and it all worked out in the end. So we're excited for homecoming week to just be successful. And then now that homecoming is over, we are starting to work in our standing committees. So these are our year-long committees. These include fundraising, development in the school, teacher appreciation, special events, and community service events. In addition, our honorary elections are just around the corner, and they're this Friday. This is an opportunity for those interested in joining student council to come into one of our meetings this week and give a little two-minute speeches to why they would be a good member, a good addition to student council. And then our student council members who listen to those speeches get to vote up to six new members onto student council. So that is fun and exciting. It'll be fun to see new faces on student council. And yes, so now that everything is kind of dying down, now that homecoming is over, we're getting back into the swing of things with our year-long goals. So, yes, thank you.
Thank you for all the hard work. I think I missed one comment in your report about who the homecoming queen was?
Oh, yes.
Congratulations to you.
Thank you.
On our behalf to all of student council as well for everything they did for the students and the community. Okay, now other board reports. Enrique, please.
Sure. I have a report from Southwest Metro. So just a couple of different updates. Firstly, we're currently working on securing, really bids for strategic planning with third-party consultants. So we've submitted an RFP. We've received responses from four consultants on that. We're going to do interviews over the next couple of weeks to evaluate which consultant we'll move forward with to build out a similar strategic planning process to evaluate who do we actually serve? What metrics are we going to use to measure those outcomes for the communities and the individuals that we serve? And how are we best serving learners of this intermediate district that serves seven different school districts and all those in between? So that's one component. The second update is Southwest Metro is looking to expand and deliver additional services. We identified that there is a significant need for elementary-age mental health supports. And we need a whole other facility just for that, regrettably. So we're currently looking at different areas within Scott County and Carver County, looking at existing schools that are, or within districts that are shrinking so that we can add in that specific space. Some more to follow.
Thank you. Sounds like very intense, but productive times right now.
Yeah, intense, but definitely needed work.
Yeah, great, thank you. Other board reports? Mary?
Of course, we had our first FLIRP meeting of the year. And as Dr. Thomas introduced a few weeks ago, that looking at, looking at committees and how we make them up, et cetera. Also, MinCaps is on a roll to look for mentors for their year. And Bridges will have their STRIVE mentorship program. Their first meeting will be, I believe, on next week on, or no, it's the 13th, sorry. So if you're interested in being a mentor for STRIVE, please attend the meeting here over lunch, I believe, on the 13th. And hopefully somebody will send out a notice and make sure that date is correct. And then I, I'm not sure, but I do believe we're still looking for volunteers for food service. I was lucky enough to be able to have the time to volunteer three days at Homs and one day at the high school recently. And when I get back from my next business trip, I'll be volunteering again. It is an incredibly rewarding experience to see all the kids, see how things work behind the scenes. And I think they're going to be looking for volunteers for quite some time now because of the lack of staff.
Julie, before I go to you, I'm
Sorry, I had a question for Marie.
Sorry, I had a question for Mary. Thank you for the update. With respect to the MinCAPS mentors, are there specific job functions or programs with which they're looking for mentors?
I would contact MinCAPS. I know that I've always, I've been volunteering for the business pathway since it got started. I know they're looking for healthcare, and for a couple of other positions.
The trades.
Trades is our newest one, so they're looking for some support there as well.
Fantastic.
If I, if I may, Chair Nelson, Director Franz and I sit on Rotary together, and, and thank you for putting that plug with Rotarians as well, for volunteering in our schools, and several of them have taken advantage of supporting our food services. And you brought up the STRIVE program. I just want to share something. So, last week, we had a Rotarian share this with the whole club, and I asked if I could just take a picture, a screenshot of his phone, and it was just one of these celebration events, but it ties directly back to what Director Franz was saying. So, I'll read this from a former student who's writing to a Rotarian, as you'll notice by the opening. "Hey dude, I don't know if you remember me, but I was one of the kids you were a mentor for at Bridges ALC. I just wanted to thank you for giving me a chance back then. I know it was for a short time, but I never forgot your kindness. I also want to apologize for not keeping in contact. I had so, I had so much happening in my life at that time, that I got too distracted with trying to keep my head above the water, and not fall into the same things my peers were getting into, as well as trying to start with a clean slate. I'm not a really religious person, but I do feel like God made our paths crossed, so I could see there are people in the world who really care, and that things will get better. I hope life has been great for you." So, I just share that from the words of one of our former students, who literally had a turnaround life experience because of that mentorship. And so, to our community, know that you make a huge difference in the lives of our students, and sometimes, you just never know what it will take to really help turn a young person's life around. So, thank you for putting that plug, Director Franz, and again, I echo that ask of our community to, to pop in and step up as a mentor.
Mary, did you have more? I want to make sure you're not cut off.
Uh, no, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Yep, thank you. Julie, did you want to add anything?
Much.
Okay. I will just add that at the AMSD meeting, I think that was last Friday, Dr. Thomas and I attended the Association of Metropolitan School Districts. They had a very powerful presentation entitled, "Holistic Violence Prevention for Schools," and it was very in-depth, very data-based, but new information that I found very helpful, and challenged some of my beliefs about what causes student violence, and are we taking the appropriate steps, that we need to in light of all of this data. So, I just, it was so powerful that everything else on the agenda ended up getting tabled until the next meeting, so that we could have as much dialogue as possible about this. I would also like to share that I had the opportunity to go to Edgewood last week, to celebrate with the early childhood staff, who had their eSTEM learning day and open house for families and children. And it, not only was it fun to just remember who our youngest learners are, I mean, they drag their parents in there. They're so excited. Let's go to this room. Let's go to this room. But it's a great chance for parents to visit with the staff, in a more informal nature. There were stations set up throughout the school. I got to put on my pretend early childhood hat, and go into the darkroom to look for nocturnal creatures, and did not find them all. So, I was ousted by a few three- and four-year-olds, who did a better job. But there were a number of hands-on stations, learning centers, and staff there who were just full-on enthusiastic, answering questions, and engaged with students and parents. And so, just my gratitude to the staff over there. Sometimes I feel like they're a little bit in a, in a separate shelf than some of the other schools, in terms of our ability to get in there and observe, and, and it was just a phenomenal night with our community. So, that is the end of my report. And next up, I will be sharing, did I miss anybody? Okay, future events. As Dr. Thomas suggested, our next Listen and Learn event is at Club Prior tomorrow at 1:00 p.m. There is no school for grades E through 12, October 19th through 21 for MEA. There is a Staff in Service Day on October 19th, a school board professional development on October 24th, here at the DSC, at 4:30 before our meeting. School board study session, October 24th, here at 6:00 p.m. The Board's Scholar Program, October 25th. Reminder that we are invited to acknowledge our, our board scholars at the high school from 11:00 a.m. to 1:30 in the lunchroom at the high school. And then our final Listen and Learn event at Shepherd of the Lake on October 27th at 6:00 p.m. So, at this time, I will be moving us, before I adjourn, we will be moving to a closed session to discuss negotiation strategy. The meeting will be closed in accordance with the open meeting law, Minnesota Statute 13D .03, for the purpose of discussing negotiation strategy. With that, could I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So may.
By Julie. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Enrique. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? All right, that carries 5-0. Thank you, everybody, and thanks for all who came tonight.